Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one in heaven.
By God, we thank you, and we pray that you'll be with us as we go through this meeting. And we ask you to bless this meeting, and we're honest and open in all our dealings. We do what's -- that we're good stewards of what you provide for the city. We do our best to be fair and honest in all that we do. Be with our first responders, military, law enforcement, firefighters, M.T., just keep them safe as they go about their duties. Be with our leaders for our country, just give them the discernment to do what's best. And also give us the discernment to do what's best for our city and for our citizens.
Okay, do you have any other comment?
I don't know.
I don't say three minutes.
Three minutes.
No, I don't need three minutes. I know that the public information, the consent agendas, or whatever, the follow along, I can't have that tonight. They're still trying to figure that out. But I would like, like if something's open for discussion, like if y'all make a motion to make something open for discussion, if I could see whatever the councilman sees, if I may get a copy, or something like that. Especially on number two, I would have liked to have had a copy of those two ordinances that Sue's about to change or do something with. I would have liked to have seen those ahead of time, and I did request them, but it wasn't probably enough time to get copies. So if I could have copies of that stuff, if it comes up for discussion, I'd appreciate it.
All right, anyone else want to comment? Going on to general business item number one, discussion and consideration of getting money on purchase order system.
We talked about this in June, because we wanted to apply it at the beginning of July. But we wanted to have, after discussion of it, we said we needed to update our expenditure policy first to include the requirement for the purchase order. So number one and number two go together. Can I speak about number two? Okay, so ordinance 19-16, of course, it was adopted in 2016. We needed to add, number nine, I believe is? Yeah, any city official authorizing to make an expenditure, so submit a purchase order for approval. Because we didn't use to have that in there, because we didn't have a purchase order procedure policy. So we needed to add that. And I'm thinking that number nine is the only thing that we really added, except for we clarified D to be $1,000 for all the city secretary, clerk, finance officer, and court clerk. All of that together, a thousand combined. And what other one was it? Was it number eight, purchase order system?
Eighteen, were they?
I am.
It's probably two, except for truck.
I think when we changed ABCs, I don't know, I said it was ten.
So while she's making copies of the expenditure, can anybody have questions about what we wanted to do on the P.O.? Because we want to get that going, so we can move on with it, get started, because we need to, I feel like, really need to purchase order system. We've never had one. And I've called around in lots of communities, municipalities that are small, I guess, that never had it, are now adopting it as well. So it's not like we're just going, we came up with the light bulb. Is this just 20 inches?
I would pull it down.
Pull down from here and pull off. These covers are benchmarking in normal. But that's the thing is, normally it's.
You can use that as one of them, check prices, stuff.
Yeah, because it might not be the first price, if it, you know? Yeah, we can do that, too. Not yet. For just, I guess, for the parts that change.
We've still just got one, three, and five.
It's double sided.
Oh, double sided.
We're saving paper now. I'll do something, but yeah.
I'll get fancy.
Next, zoom in. The Elmo does have a remote control. But it still has to stand up to put it over there. Okay, so number eight was the purchase order system. Except that otherwise provided, all purchase orders are required to be processed on a purchase order according to proper procedure. And diligent effort must be made to obtain three prices. So that one we outdated. And we have two number nines. So number nine on page three really is page 10.
I got a question for you, number eight.
Okay.
Based out of three doesn't have to mean that she was correct. It could be the one that, like, when we did the design on the trailer there, we had three, but then we went to reviews, and reviews was better on one than on the other.
Yeah, that's what best and not, and not lowest cost, that's why it's worded best. Okay, but yeah, Mort, I guess we do need three number. Because there's eight and a nine. I see nine, yeah. Yeah, so we'll need three number. Did you have that one? Did you just? Did you read that one? Did you read that one? I read eight. I read, I did eight, and nine was a, nine was new, too? And what else did you have marked that we hadn't? I was just, did you read, you got this one? Yeah. Purchase orders for emergencies, is this what you're talking about, Melinda? On page four, E12, the person making emergency expenditures and exit with that person's authorized amount without prior city council approval shall notify the secretary, finance officer, and the mayor within 48 hours of the expense. And then a purchase order will be issued, too. So the purchase order system was going to be one that can be a shared system, so that it automatically issues the P.O. number in sequential order. And basically, the hope would be that, you know, Cory would learn how to fill it out, too, send to Cynthia, then get up in her system and look at it, you know? And Mort, the same, and then Norma, the same, they can access it and look at it. We got to do the P.O. thing first, because that's the order protocol.
So I'll make a motion, so we can discuss about the purchase order system.
Can we make a motion by Heather Martin? I can second it, Karen. So you need absolutely no, no ideas next.
So can I ask a question, Charles?
Yeah.
So at the bottom paragraph, it says, "Anyone in the police department or city mall staff that needs to order something will give the item and part number, if applicable, to the city secretary who will shop for three prices." Is there a reason why the city secretary shopping with the police department instead of the shop? Because in my mind, someone with police experience might know better menus to make purchases than the city secretary.
That must be more. We had, obviously. Yeah. So, yeah, we can update that, because I had a couple minor word changes that I wanted.
I mean, I still think the whole system is great, still shopping for three prices and finding the best one.
So we can make a little paragraph like we do for the utility department for the police department. They'll just have, she'll just have to get the information for the purchase order, and then they'll have to create it.
Well, yes, for sure. But clearly, that probably makes sense. I'm just wondering, as far as, like, is there different menus that they might be more available, that might be more effective?
In that second paragraph, you need to charge that one sheet to utility clerk.
I know.
The clerk, because it could be another thing.
That's right. That's it. I marked that. Yeah, those were notes just to you guys, so you know that we were going to have a meeting to tell the staff. Right, yeah.
Also, I have one question. We could, if a first back council, we can change mark three.
I do, because we didn't approve it in June.
That's what we're trying to do, right?
I know, but when you're doing this, you need to initially point someone out.
And on the, on this front cover page for the purchase order system, we also want to just reiterate, make a number eight for emergencies or weekends, that they make sure they tend to the emergency, but have 48 hours notice, 48 hours to notify, enter, and approve your requests. Because it says that in the expenditure, but I want to also put it on the purchase order system.
And then, I just have one other thing, and it's kind of nitpicky, but it's more on the usage of words. The number one, it says, "Purchase orders must be completed and approved prior to the expenditure." So technically, before, a purchase order is something that is approved and that you're going to do. So technically, when you're asking for something and fully have the paperwork, it's a requisition. So no one has a problem with that.
So purchase order requisition must be?
It would say a requisition, yeah, because you're requesting it, and then once it's approved.
It says purchase order.
Does it?
It certainly does.
And we can do it that way. I just always do it the other way.
Because I did at school, this student, say, well, yeah, get a purchase order. I mean, that's what they'd say. It wouldn't be a requisition when you send it over to the admin building. They want to see the final cost and everything filled out, the way you ordered.
And everything. So I've always seen it done, and like I said, it just comes down to terminal. How I've always seen it done is, it's a requisition until it's approved, and then it's a purchase order, and then your invoice number is what you get back from the vendor, and it's three separate things. So I was just trying to find the whole stuff, and it's just how we really want to do it, we can do it.
That's actually a change, Ted, because you're talking about nowadays, yours is old school, hers is new school. Nowadays, when we do projects, you do a purchase rec first, and then that actually goes to somebody else who issues the purchase order. It's kind of like checks and balances, so one person doesn't do the whole thing. So your both techniques are correct.
Yeah, I mean, because it's so small, at the city hall.
Yeah, it makes sense.
The person doing it needs to do the whole thing, and then hand it over to Norma.
Yeah, I agree. It wouldn't make sense to split them up.
No, it's not necessarily three different pieces of paper. It's just for rich to talk about where you are in a process, but it's not the end of the world either way.
Well, in my mind, the purchase order is going to be that piece of paper, okay, that they have. Then probably, you print out the order sheet, and fill all that in, so that's already two pieces of paper.
Right, and what it is, is before it's signed, it's the same piece of paper, but before it's signed, it's considered a requisition, and once it's signed, it's considered a purchase order. The issue goes to the whole department. But like I said, it's not the end of the world either way, we don't need it. It's just something projected out of the, that it's been done before. And when, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. Number seven, it says that invoice must match the purchase order. Are we talking about even exact match, because sometimes when you're getting quotes, they're close, but it might not actually.
It should match. It should match, because your P.O. is approved for that certain amount of money. It should match that invoice that that vendor sends in. Yeah, and the vendors are going to get a letter from Norma that states we're going to go to this policy, and that they need to match, and they need to have a P.O. number on the invoice going forward, so she can match these. Now, Norma was going to handle the letter part, you know? Because right now, it's basically the local people that have that, you know, Lake Hart, Napa, O'Reilly. Who else is in there? Yeah, maybe, maybe. Do we do that at Walmart? Do we go to Walmart?
Yeah, we go to Walmart.
We do some of that, too.
We use a card.
Eddie Langens?
Yeah, usually he comes out and then gives us the, yeah, because they don't pay us stuff. Anyways, it's not that many vendors that she has sent a letter, so.
So we'll charge that one more to a requisition.
We can put purchase order, you can do purchase order requisition or purchase requisition, either way. Yes, please. And then just a little bit of grammar on the bottom, after you add that, also a paragraph for the police department? This wasn't part of the. I know, but, okay, so it's not going to go to the guys, the girls? I just wanted to let you know that we're going to have a meeting, and that's what we want to explain to them. But when you document that you had the little meeting with them, get them to sign a training form, or at least on this, that they also received a copy and understand what.
Well, no, but the chapter following it, only two pages. They make all your police officers come? Are you making all the police officers come? To the meeting on Monday?
Well, it's two components, and it's not to them.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't make sense to make all of you there, sitting there. I mean, they'll have to fill it out sometime, but it shouldn't be down, telling them how they're doing.
Because everybody's going to need to know about it.
And she could just give to the mission, because you have to train that way.
So then, does this become part of the, what you can put into the expenditure policy? All that, what you try to call this as?
They probably should get put in there, because we added, we added the ordinance for it, expenditure ordinance, so. This, this expenditure? This will go with the new hire package, with the expenditure they sign.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure, that we can try to.
So we're going to vote on the purchase order number one to that, we all like to, she's going to start that.
I would like it to be voted on tonight.
Okay, we didn't make any major changes.
So we made a motion to.
So we make a motion to pass this along with the changes that we made to the holiday. On the purchase order system sheet.
You guys have a minute?
And the purchase order system?
I'll shake.
You can have a motion by Heather Martin, second is item turn, see any more discussion? All the paper, any opinions?
Yes.
Okay, number two, we'll be discussing consideration of ordering since 1916 and ending and replacing orders from 1902 and 1404 establishing an expenditure policy.
So kind of went over that with the purchase order. Motion.
Motion to pass ordinance 19.
It will be 19.
16, 16, and 1404?
No, just 1916. Just 1916, because it, they'll replace late 1900.
So we make a motion, we pass ordinance 1916 establishing expenditure policy.
Can you just repeat the whole?
Yeah, I did, I told you this last time. Yeah, I made a motion, we pass ordinance 1916 and ending and replacing ordinance 1902, 1404 establishing.
And that we have to resolve.
It's an ordinance, the city of Danbury, Texas, amending and replacing ordinance since 1902 and 1404 establishing an expenditure policy, providing for the physical management of the city prohibiting unbudgeted expenditures, restricting transfers between budget items, requiring department supervisors to monitor their budgets, requiring two signatures on checks, regulating credit card expenditures, requiring bidding according to the law, requiring purchase orders for all expenditures, providing maximums giving authority of certain persons, providing for emergencies, requiring documentation of expenditures, providing for presentation of accounts available to city council, and providing for conflicts of terms, severance laws, and effective date.
Okay, we have a motion, second, second about bringing them again, any more discussion? All the paper, any opinions? Yeah, motion passes. Thank you. Done. Number three, discussion and consideration of purchasing a bulletproof waterproof safe for city hall. You see the bid's there, and what we want to do is take the safe that's in the utility office now and move it to the police department. We're using it before, and then we got back, put the licenses and stuff back in there. But now, we need one that's fireproof and waterproof. This one that we have in there, together with the P.D., and for securing weapons and stuff, could be great. They said we need it to be fireproof and waterproof, they just need a place to lock their stuff. So we have a bid for $532.36 from Office Supply, one from Lowe's for $543.59, one from Home Depot for $6059, oh nine, and we were not able to get any dollars to donate one to a city.
Are they all reading the same? It's all the same model, that those three prices are. They're all the exact same model? Yes. Just at different locations?
Should include delivery, or?
It looks like the, one of them has shipping of $74 included, the other has free shipping. Has office supply. And then, that's the last page. And people was the same as Lowe's, they had the free shipping, too, did they?
They were.
But Lowe's, do you have to, yeah?
Office supply is the cheapest, including, you can get.
Even if you pay for shipping. So this is going to be happy, when they deliver it, it's going to be, like, how are they getting it off the truck? That's their problem?
Yeah, they'll have a problem. I think it's only 21 inches wide, 19 inch deep, three foot, a little over three foot high.
I think you just tell them, like, well, we wanted, like, pretty big.
Okay.
Yeah, they do.
It's 217 pounds, okay. I was thinking it was like that big one, I would look at the dimensions.
This is smaller than that.
Yeah, this is smaller than that, okay.
Probably big enough for the documents. I'll make a motion that we purchase central safe EF4738D, 4.71 cubic foot, fire safe from Office Supply, for a price of $532.36, including delivery.
Okay, we have a motion by Heather Trump, see this second about bringing them in, any more discussion? Okay, all the paper, any opinions? Number four, discussion and consideration of purchasing the bulletproof vests for officers.
Are y'all tonight? Okay, so what I've given you is just a letter of request, and I've given you each three quotes attached from three different companies that provide body armor. All of them are Class 3A. Since coming to Danbury on July 8th, I've been made aware of that not one officer here at the Danbury Police Department has a vest that is not expired. All their vests are possibly 10 years old and were purchased at other police agencies. The vests only last five years, and they are vital to our safety. I've been in law enforcement for 27 years, and I've never not had a vest, not one single day that I've been on duty in law enforcement, until I come to the Danbury Police Department. So I personally, right now, have borrowed a vest from another department, but it expires in November from 32 constable's department, has a vest that they're loaning me, but it's not going to be fitted for me. It's not going to exactly fit me, but it will be a little bit attached to what I have, which is nothing. One officer is not even currently wearing one, because his is so old, it's just by falling apart. And even Nick's is borrowing the car as well, and his is 10 years old. And so I propose that for the safety of the officers, that the city council approve and purchase bulletproof vests for each officer.
How many officers would you ask to?
As of now, it would be for, it would be for the two reserves and the two officers. And for me, because I'm here. The vest that I'm currently wearing is borrowed, so it's not fitted for me. So if I end up getting in any type of shooting situation, then the city, then the city's still responsible for me wearing a vest that's not, that's not made for me, and somebody else's is borrowed.
The council probably prove it to me, the 3659.
Nick, do you want to add anything? This is something that Nick started prior to me coming to the Danbury Police Department, and then once I came, and I actually, I took over and continued giving the estimates and all that for the vest.
Pretty much up basically, it's a safety concern for every officer that, you know, can have on duty or off duty. It depends on policy, whether you have gear, there's a policy, we should wear a vest on duty at all times or in uniform at all times, whether it be extrajobs, over the road jobs, or banking jobs, or being near the city. Because policy's in place, which is something we have to look through, and finally, we have policies to get paid. Because if there is one, it's probably I paid it. It would be nice to have vests that are current. We were working on the grant to get vests funded, but of course, at the same time, we've got to get all that stuff. The quotes, we just got, she just got the finish. She'll probably drag them up here. My vest, for my own, was $1,300, and I bought it in 2010, it was made in '09. So it is expired. Will it work? Maybe. Is it a, is it a chance? Sure, I'm not going to bother and ask you shots, so I'm not going to test it. Maybe when it's, you know, maybe the vest will bother them to shoot up. But vests are definitely key for officers' safety, especially in this day and age. It just really, I mean, I know we're Danbury, but crime doesn't happen at us, it can go anywhere.
We have a no.
We are on our personal vehicles, we see something. We are on our personal vehicles, we see something happen, and we have to act. We can't drive by and say, "Well, we didn't see it," or "We can't do this." They are expensive. And we were talking about earlier where you can do a buyback program, the city does fund the vests, where the officer would reimburse the city if they wanted to go with it if they aren't fitted. Some vests, you can get, like, you know, Big Boy, I gave a lot of weight back. So, my vest is not gonna fit a skinny officer, it's not gonna fit her. You must have a special designed vest for female officers. No vest won't fit, fit in at all. They just don't work. But my vest will fit somebody else. Now, if it's bigger, it would fit them, but it wouldn't be as comfortable, maneuverability down, stuff like that.
Right. So, what they do, the aspect of it is, when they, when they measure, they, they make exceptions for your gun belt when they're setting and everything else. So, like, you've got Nick's long shape right here, and then you get another officer, and if, if his vest comes to here, another officer that's shorter than him, every time he sits down, the vest is gonna come up, and it's gonna come up to here, and it's gonna rise up to their chin. So, that's why they're like fitted for each officer as well, because they don't, you know, you have to wear it all day long, 12 hours or more.
Statement, I'll just wear the vest right now.
Mm-hmm.
It's, Dyson gave me his from, the first one they gave him is Surfside. So, it's 10 plus years old.
Can I see the style? Do you mind?
That's fine.
It's kind of an outer carrier, because he didn't have the straps or anything for me to wear underneath.
So, the, so the quote that I've gotten is for just the inside carrier, which is, which is what most of your bulletproof vests come with. And so, you strap it inside your shirt. And so, what he's done, he's purchased an outer carrier, they're like $50 to $100. So, the last department I was at, they made it like optional. If you wanted to wear it inside, they paid for the vest, but if you wanna wear it outside, they paid for the vest, and you bought that carrier. And would you take it out of the carrier that it comes in, inside your shirt, and then you put it inside that outside carrier. And they made those carriers for the serial number for the vest that you purchased. And so, when you contact the company, and you say, "Hey, I want a outside carrier," they look at the dimensions of the vest that they fitted for you, and they make that to fit that vest. So, it fits, it would fit his body from, from his vest. Is, is how it's done.
Which one's more comfortable? The outer for him?
The outer one's nicer, because whenever you're out there to traffic, you can come back here and take it off without having to take your shirt and everything off, you can just take the carrier off and pull off. You know, they're, they're a lot cooler, you can open the sides of them after you've been out the heat, and the AC can blow on you, not on your vest, but there's wind, doesn't go as easy.
And the one, the quote from Lawman's, that one was, when I got the quote, that was for the external carrier, just because the external carrier's just a little bit better and lasts longer. It's more comfortable, you breathe it. They sell different styles, ones with pockets here, they sell the only style, which is military kind of, or the load-bearing vest, which we were talking about, because when you're an officer, you see how much gear you're carrying, and that's, you know, that's not all the stuff that you possibly put on there, it's really how many you've got. They sell load-bearing vests that you can attach things to, not overly, like, military, really, really bad, but I know what you're going to go on to, where some of their equipment will place on their vests.
I don't recommend that personally. I recommend exactly what Stephen is wearing right now, because it, I mean, it...
It's uniform.
It looks uniform for, for what he's wearing with his uniform. And then he can remove it when he comes inside and get some air, and then put it right back on. Another thing is the body cam. So, he can remove that when he comes in, in case he accidentally turns on his body cam, it's not long while he's using the restroom. Because I've known a lot of officers that have done that in the past. So, if he don't, you know, if he removes his vest when he comes in as well, his outer carrier, he don't have, he don't have the risk of accidentally having his body cam on still and catching himself in the, in the restroom.
See, when I worked here the first time, the city bought us vests, and we had the option when we left to buy them, back from the city. And when I came back to buy my vest, because it would just be barely expired now, my vest wouldn't have been able to be found. And so, I would, if that would have been the case, if I'd have been able to buy mine back, I would have had one that would be right at the expiration date, where when I came to buy it, it magically disappeared, and the person in charge at the time had no clue where it went.
So, they, they have an average life of 10 years?
Five.
Five years, five years is your use of time. They have shelf life of 10. So, that the shelf life, if they're not used, is 10 years. But you figure with UV, rain, the elements, your, your, your five years, what they'll say is normal wear. If you're wearing it every day on the street, you'll get five years out of it. Reserve officers, we get a little bit more, because we're not on the street every day. So, you have a little bit longer to guarantee, to go with, but your five years is what I would stick with, unless you have brand new vests sitting in the box, not open, in a closet, in dark space, then you have 10 years. I mean, they will last longer, but there's no guarantees. There's just, it's, they say five years is what, what you'll wanna have. Any longer than that, then you run a higher risk of penetration, the quality of materials deteriorated behind. UV, sunlight's really bad on them, rain, wet sweat, everything. That vest, it helps, whereas the one against your body is right there, and you're just beating sweat on it the whole time. Whereas that one, you can unzip half side and just kinda air it out a little bit, take it off, sit on the chair like in the office, and work around. I mean, the externals wear, wear a lot of agencies that don't. It's a lot, a lot better. But those are more, they're more fitted, when you do the external carriers, they're definitely more fitted than the inside ones. And then it goes on officer preference, some officers don't like a torso vest, rather than, I like to pull cover from here to here. I like to be covered, 100%. There are officers that don't mind it being a little bit open bellied, but then it falls on officer preference. You know, however everyone wants to wear it. I would say torso, you know, this area needs to be covered, definitely this area. But every officer definitely...
And the majority of the time when they fit you, they're gonna cover, cover you holes in down, up until where you sit down, where you're done, all ties up.
They go two inches from your belt line. So, they'll come up from my belt line, come up two inches, about where this, the bottom of my carrier, my vest was up here, my carrier goes down to here. So, it'd be about where my carrier sits, is where my vest should be.
Should.
Because you get shot in the gut, it's still, yeah, it's still gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt either way.
Well, they say if you got six inches of fat, you're a little bit better, so I'm pretty covered.
Wow. What's the delivery time on these, Eric?
Forty-five, 30 to 45 days.
When you say a carrier versus a vest?
No, it's the carrier with the vest in five minutes.
Are you gonna feel here?
The arm, there's nothing they can do.
I watched, I watched on a picture that I didn't make. So, this, this is what it looks like, this is a female vest versus a male vest, so I'll just show you this. So, when the vest comes, it looks like this. So, they all come like this. Then it has, in the back of this, in the front and the back, it's got a, like a pouch that opens up and you pull the whole vest, so the vest is here, here, it's completely, it's completely fitted inside here, front and back. And so, you unzip it or unbelt curl it, and then you pull, you pull the panel out, the actual bulletproof vest, you pull it from this carrier. This is one that goes inside your shirt. And so, you remove the front and the back, and then you put it inside the front of that, and then the back of that, and you just take it from this to that. And then if you decide, if you get to a point where you don't wanna wear that, and you're just wearing, say you're wearing it to shirt like Nick is, on an extra job or something, and you're gonna wear your vest, then, then you can just put it inside your shirt as well, you could put it back inside this. And then each vest normally comes with two carriers and extra straps as well.
Carrier washable.
Yes, so when you wash them, then you can put it in the other one, and vice versa.
The vest itself, the ballistic clip is not washable, you can't throw it, you can't throw it to wash, is that?
It'll wash off.
It'll break them down. Then you make a spray for them, that you can spray, is it, it's pretty much a sanitizer, deodorizer spray, to try and get the smell out of them.
They do start to stink.
But, yeah, they, after six months to a year of wearing them, they, they...
From there.
Yeah, and there's, and there's really nothing you can do about it, because you can't wash them, you can't do a carbon spray on them, because it breaks down material. So, they, and that's why, you know, having your own vest, that's yours, it's kinda like wearing underwear. I mean, would you wanna wear somebody else's underwear?
Yeah, that's pretty much essentially what it is, you know, again, it's, you wear it under your clothes, it's against your body, and it's got your body all over it.
When you say you're wearing one of extra jobs, how does that work out? Does the officers pay a fee each, each month, or being able to take it and use it on other jobs?
No, they're purchased for them, and when they're, when they're, whether they're at their extra jobs or not, and they work for the city of Danbury, and we allow them to work extra jobs, they're still representing us when they're out there. So, when they're in uniform and they're working, they need to be in their vest. There, there's no...
Especially when they're working second jobs, they need to definitely have on their vest.
Well, they're more dangerous there than they are here.
That's what I'm talking about.
I know we've, we've bought them in the past, and in Officer's League, we did give them the option, but I know, I know one officer, or a cop, vest bought his, and I don't know if it ever been like, I did, now Stevenson disappeared, I knew we thought he was one.
Well, I know that when we did that employee that went home, there was a closet full of vests.
There was.
And I'm, I'm not gonna name any names, but I know for a fact that there was a closet full of vests. And a lot of them, there was like, some of them was brand new, still in the package. And they disappeared.
When I worked here the first time there, the city bought me a vest, and in a closet there were several vests. We kept an extra in the trunk of the cars, in case there was a situation where we needed a little bit more protection, then we could throw one of those on on top of us. And I came up here about a month after I quit, and asked to buy my vest, and Jimmy Carter looked for it, and she's like, she called me a few days later, she says, "You can't, nobody can seem to find it, it's disappeared."
And that's where I am with mine from Code PD, because it has two years left on it. And so, the chief said that I could have it, if they looked everywhere for it, and someone, and someone took it or someone bought it, so, or I would be able to get my vest and have, have two years left on it, because it is fitted for me, but somebody's bought it, so.
Would you look it up on Twitter?
The, the chief said that he thought one girl might be wearing it until her vest came in, but she didn't end up having it. And so, they're not sure, they're not sure what happened to it. They found the box, because I returned everything in the box with the extra carriers and everything in it. So, they found the box, they just weren't able to find the vest.
So, now that it's gone, some of the quotes, Nick, you know, I guess, I know it's down to...
He did Lawman's.
Those women, he quoted, I quoted for status, he's quoted for status, here from it says, quote, for eight.
Well, we, we still have to just take it in effect that it's still what it is for an individual vest. And so, I was thinking, when I did mine, the initial one, and I think you did eight with Lawman's, that I was thinking that there's four patrol positions, four reserve positions, and if it ever came down to it, if, if the city of Danbury didn't purchase the vests, and the 100 club or someone else purchased them for us, we would try to get them to purchase vests for each person. And so, that's why at Cop Stop, I said, "You know what, just do it as an individual, it doesn't matter if it's female or male, they cost exactly the same whether it's female or male." But initially, just said, "Okay, seven, four reserves, three officers, four reserves, one chief, two, two officers. If we had full staff minus the extra patrol officer, it would be seven." So, I did my quote for seven, then I saw that he had, that he had that is quote for eight, four spots and four reserves. So, this is just an estimate, and there's, there's still the same price that I gave you in the memo, what's written on here, that's what they are individually for each vest per person.
But if they're looking for a specific person, and you don't even have that person...
No, we can't buy them in advance.
No, that's one of the reasons.
You would want to, now, you can buy a generic size, but you're gonna run into the issue of what, you're gonna, then you're gonna fit the best of the officer, you're gonna have to hire the officer to fit the vest.
To fit the vest.
Instead of the vest fit the officer.
My thing was, I discovered when you said, "I, if it made a difference in the price, because you're buying more."
No.
The only way you get a break on price, because Nancy got the quote a while back from Cop Stop, and they were gonna piggyback us with Pearland, and Pearland was ordering, I think, 50, 50 more, or 50 new vests, replacing out 50 of their vests. So, they were gonna piggyback us on their order, so we were gonna get a little bit of a break, I think it was 10%, something like that, off the cost. But the only way you get a, a break on it is if you're ordering, you know, a...
It's hard to...
They also really do breaks, because they're handmade, they're, they're type consuming facilities, they're not, a machine doesn't throw them out, punch them out. And I know my last one, inside of it, you could see where the girl who made it had signed her name to it, and said, "Be safe." So, they're handmade, they're not just machined.
So, did you check with the TML buying program to see if, you know, we could piggyback anybody else?
No, I have not.
I just thought that, when you said piggyback somebody else, because TML has that buying first program, and they help you piggyback with other people that are buying the same similar things, so you get a cheaper price.
And then you mentioned the 100 tour, is that, 113 grand?
Yes.
That's what we got, that's what we got.
That's pretty much a guaranteed thing from them, I mean, they, they really like to provide safety equipment to officers. They're really...
Right. And so, and so if the city, if the city council says that in this budget, you cannot afford to purchase the vest for us, and we could get a letter from y'all saying that, and give it to 100 club, along with the policy procedure on...
Drugs, the drug usage, non-usage for the city. They want to see that policy.
Then they would purchase the vest for us individually.
Well, I'll, you know, I've been up, when we got radios, I lived with one of the chiefs, and went up there, set through the, the discussion, and at the time, I can't remember the guys, they used to be a Channel 39 news, or something like that, but he said, he was the first mayor that was ever come with the police chief.
They had the one lead, they had the one lead.
No, no, it was somebody else. Anyway, they were very receptive, and, you know, it didn't take long to get radio. I'm, I'm 100% in support that officers need vests. My son laws this on, he, it goes on before he leaves the house. And then your mom's lead is on.
So, I mentioned to you, I, I think you...
Yes, yes.
I have a nephew that started a company that makes body armor.
And I love his videos.
Safe Life Defense.
Yes.
And his name is Nathan Groth. And he's willing to donate some vests to the, to the, to the city. So, I need to get you guys hooked up, so you can at least check him out, and see if his equipment is what you really want.
They are. He's progressed tremendously, I've been reading a lot of his work.
Yeah, he's, he's, I don't know why he started, but he started, and he's doing good.
He's California carries.
And they have a program too, where they donate to first responders and everything. So, I can get you to perfect, because online, his personal information is not, not there, but I, I, I have, I have people to give.
I know, I think, we have not talked about it, but he, he did mention something.
Yeah, so let's try that too, because, you know, we all agree you guys need them.
Do we need a motion? I'll make a motion that we allow the chief to pursue options for providing body armor, that safety vest for the police department. That way it covers, you know, whether through you, through 100 club, or in the event we can't get that, we have, it gives more options, just, just by...
Awesome.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Bill Tuncy, to give the chief permission to pursue the options, and then come back to report bill at the August 15th meeting, maybe?
Just whenever you need...
I mean, I'll work on it, I mean, because we need him, we need him, so I, I can do all this in fifteen. I'll have it out by then.
So, a motion by bill, and the second by Greg, okay? All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll be honest, I didn't want to, but I didn't have one.
Thank you so much.
It's one of those unsaid things, we just kinda come in and work it, I mean... We just got our old ones and go with it.
But I notice you can always wear it. I didn't know.
My uncle always wore one too.
Most of us purchased our own, we, to the exception where he got cheap outfits, all the ones, but, you know.
If we do the policy, I think, if somebody leaves the department, stays here, unless we offer it to the...
Yeah, you definitely contract rate it, don't disappear, because they're expensive.
They'll be locked up.
Chief should check them out, and then when the city...
I can't remember for sure, but when I was here the first time, it was, if I split staying three years, then the vest was mine. And anything shorter than three years, then I paid the pro rated price, it depreciated so much each year, and then the third year, it was mine, I keep. And I've been here, I think, a year and a half, two years, that I live, and I think the pro rated price for it, the city paid $1,300 for it, maybe even possibly $600 if I had gonna cost me $600 to buy it, something like that. Not half, less than half the price.
And most officers will buy it back just because we've worn it for so long. It's contour to our body. It fits us good. We trust it. We know what we're wearing.
The best thing about it is like when they fit you and you put it on, like if you don't, if it's not fitted right, they completely take it back and refit it new and do it all over again for free.
Does it, over time, does it become more fitted to you?
Yes.
It just gets, it gets softer.
Yep, yep. And over, a lot of times it'll start sagging the bottoms. It'll start pinching up. It'll start going down. It'll have soft spots where it's gone too.
It doesn't often.
Maybe a cord fiber or.
Never really like they got a lace fabric.
Catwalk, most of it's catwalk now.
I was just asking, my state.
Different type of material now. I have a whole bunch of videos on the website that are really, really, really good.
I don't want to waste your spending money if we give them to somebody that knows them and you have to deal.
Okay. When I'm now to number five, discussion consideration of removing the general utility budget for fiscal year 2018, two things I had to, I had to go back and look it back over to make sure where we need to make changes. So what I'm here to the general budget is transfer out, then on that last line is what I decided to call it after talking to your, I'm suing, I don't remember, I, yeah. I called it transfer out with $30,750. So that's how I handled it in the general budget because I took the street drainage of $6,750 off. That's when we thought we were gonna have to, maybe use a legal word on busted up some concrete drives. And then we took the low grant that we pulled out of there and put the two together. That, that is what came up with the transfer out of 30,750. And then if you look over at the utility budget, first thing we did was put up asterisk by recovery fees. And then on the back of the page, we put the asterisk that said restricted for recoveries. So people in the future understand you can't spend that $5,000 unless you have a legacy. And so what we did was put it down as an expenditure every year that recovery fees, we got a little asterisk on the very last line of the budget to show $5,000. And then we put in the money up there. The, it went from the other income went from $22,000 with the addition of $30,750 to $54,750. That's what we did later. I was trying to make it as transparent as possible.
Speaking of transparency, may I have a copy of which I was looking at?
I will give you all my copies. I will get through them.
Oh, I can't have it now?
Well, I still would.
Well, I cannot have a copy. I'm asking the mayor and the secretary.
I have no secrets.
Do you want me to make a copy?
I'll, I'll drop the originals after. I might be on either way. So I got the originals.
Well, I'll make a motion that we pass orders number 19 dash 17 in order to see, Danbury text for men in the budget fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, by segment clause, says severance clause. Severance clause is effective today.
Okay. I have a motion by Bill Thompson and segment by Heather Arm. Any more discussion?
Then we're done.
Okay. All in favor? You have. All right. Go to number six. Consider procedures and schedule for budget and tax rate secondary with the office bases. Larry's, this is getting, yes, he did.
Today's the first. And bam, you have something, you know, it's like, are we behind already or is this just aggressive?
No, we've just got.
Yeah, I know. We just got, and we just got the.
Yes. I had a copy and I said, I, I mean, we said, she said, well, I have a copy. I said, well, sorry.
He actually, we were discussing, making decisions. So he has us happy.
Cause he asked, and I told him, I said, girl, is this thing going?
It was every, it was every Thursday in July.
Right. And we only have, I think at least two other places that will come in generally next week. They waited this long, they waited too long to start asking. So we have to leave. We gotta have four weeks. So I got about four weeks. So if you leave here next week, that's it.
I can probably be here, but I'm, I doubt we even get here. That's it.
Yeah, that's a good problem.
You know, looking at all this, I'm reading this thing that came from Rob, that believes that reads the thing as that five asterisks down there says, notice hearing limit, the highest tax rate they adopt without policy text control is notice 50 dash 819 and holding two public hearings. Notice 58, 50 dash 818 must still be published because the lower roll back tax rate or the effective rate, which segments the effective rate. 1773569. If we do that, we don't have to have, by law, we don't have to have all of these hearings.
Correct. You just need the effective tax.
And me, we do that, we're getting $6,000 more than we got this year. I, I don't want to have to go to the bow or go back and anything like that.
But it's not on the agenda today. But it's not on the agenda today, but it will be next week.
Well, this is consider procedures and schedules. So if we could cut some of these things out, we can, right now, we can adopt this and we believe them if we don't need them. I think, I'm not sure.
You just thought Bill would agree with me?
Just trying to talk, because I don't think we need grace, grace. I think we keep the lower rate, get the same amount of money and we do well. We'll see when we start working on the place.
Sure. Be here next Thursday. And hopefully all of these other things.
The bad thing about this, this year, then you finish with the rest in, probably September.
September.
And then the, the, the new year starts.
It started earlier.
They were, I had to help you do it. It's still, you know, unless you decide, you'll have to do budget, it's going to take a little time because budget was starting in January. But budget was starting in January. You had to have it finished by March.
By March.
Because you had to have everything done so that if you decide to go too high, you can be on the agenda to have an election.
Now, that, to me, that's the stupidest thing in the world because you don't have all the information.
You only have.
The budget, you know, here and here.
You only have three months in your fiscal year.
They'll, they'll have to speed on.
They'll have to look at two decisions. I mean, once you start rolling it forward, the next year's.
The next year's be okay.
That first year's. That first year's gonna.
First year's gonna be bad. First year's gonna be straight under.
Just want to come quick with the numbers you already have. If you do the same budget, basically what you found it to do, your best test. Do we have to?
So we don't, they wouldn't consider. So we don't have to vote on, we're just gonna say this is our schedule line.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote and say this is the schedule? I guess we have to.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the schedule of the memorandum that Larry sent out for budget and tax calendar.
Okay. Second. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. So down here on number two, on budget workshops, schedule other future budget workshops on that and we'll write in office aid. Next, that's good. Now, I know we're finished with the utility budget, so chunk stuff at me. Did you bring it back? I'll try to bring it back. One more time. Chunk stuff at me.
You shouldn't. Your lawyer, don't you go in there, really don't you.
Can I ask a question? Um, the mayor had asked about his salary analysis worksheet that the city of West Columbia had obtained. And so I was able to get that for all local case departments to see what salaries, what officers are making. Would y'all like a copy of this?
Yes.
I don't know where y'all are at in the budget, like.
Just nail store.
Okay. So I'll go make a copy for everybody.
Okay. So what I did on the, the budget is, I had to, I had to put something in. I need $1,000 for stickers.
Can't follow the line.
That has to be done by General Wolf County and everybody that works, who's, who touches the computer has to have training and understanding this. All council members have to have training. And the state, now they sent out a survey through TML to, to find out what we already did. Well, I started putting in all of Wolf County's information, then he got down to the last part and he said, what, are you already using? Well, we don't have any of them. So we didn't have even a program for him to look at to say if it was good key or not key. So that tells me we're gonna have to purchase a program for someone to put in a train. So I put in $1,000 because I thought that would be Roger, Cory and Cynthia for the training. I'm just estimating, you know, about $300 each. So that's what I did was take $1,000 from the capital outload. Last time we had it at 35, 830. And I just brought it down to 34, 830 to be able to put $1,000.
I mentioned all that I said. The hand raised.
I don't have it.
Go copy my scratch.
Well, I, I just couldn't follow along. I was listening to you and I'm looking for it and I'm like, I'm not.
They, and I've done, I've spit twice in one. I'll miss it. Well, we were gonna, we were going to pass it last time, or, or we looked at it and it went far right. And I said, go back and like 20 years, venture it all in, that right. But we can't really, but we'll pass it. But.
Well, if, if everybody has a desire for security, don't you think they're gonna be offering like 40?